All right, I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call, please.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stair.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
And councillor Pictionary is excused, he is running just a little bit late, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the county commission.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I am going to open the Lane County Board of Commissioners work session. I don't know who will be calling roll for us.
I will call roll for you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trigger.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Bozovic.
Here.
Vice Chair Farr.
Accountant Farr.
Chair Bernie.
Here.
All right, well, welcome, everybody, it's been a long time since we've had a joint meeting with our partners over at the county, so it's a it is it a pleasant surprise, and hopefully, next time, we'll all be doing this in person, where the county can provide the snacks. We have one item tonight, it's the floodplain overlay district code amendments with Sandy and Rachel, and I'm going to turn it over to them for a presentation, and then we'll be able to ask a couple of questions.
Good evening, Mayor and council board of commissioners, I'm happy to be here with you tonight, we're gonna take this first half hour to orient you to the project and preparation for the public hearing this evening. So, my name is Sandy Belson, I am the interim planning manager for the city of Springfield, and I will let Rachel introduce herself.
Hello, I am Rachel Serslov, senior planner with Lane County Planning. Thank you, Sandy.
So I'm showing my screen, hopefully, you can see it. So tonight, the topic before you are floodplain overlay district amendments to the Springfield Development Code, and there is a companion code amendment to the lane code for the applicability of the Springfield Code in the urbanizable area, that is, the area between the city limits and the urban growth boundary. We took a little bit different path to get to this point tonight in that the Lane County Planning Commission has not reviewed this, this was a Springfield Planning Commission providing a recommendation to both bodies, and that is allowed per the intergovernmental agreement that we had established previously. We did it that way this time, rather than taking it through the Lane County Board, because for two reasons, one, most of the amendments, there is really not much discretion, as I'll get into later, in order to comply with the federal requirements. And secondly, just as a savings on the workload. So the planning commission did make a recommendation, the Springfield Planning Commission, to both elected bodies, and then you will individually take action following the public hearing. And I'll just say, if there are questions as we go, feel free to get my attention somehow, the way my screen is set up, I don't see everybody, so I'll be relying on the mayor and the chair to jump in and let me know if you have questions as we go through this work session portion. So the request before you tonight is a type four legislative amendment to the Springfield Development Code, and there are two sections that are being amended. So one is the floodplain overlay district itself. That is where all of the regulations around floodplain development are found within the Springfield Development Code, and then there are corresponding changes to our definitions section. Previously, we had much of the definitions that were specific to the floodplain embedded into that general definition section, but we have moved all of the definitions relevant to floodplain, specific to that floodplain overlay district section. So that, I think, eliminates some confusion, it puts all of the definitions relevant to the floodplain in that same section. And then, as I mentioned, it does require approval from the Lane County Board of Commissioners, and I'll let Rachel speak to that a little bit more.
Thanks, Sandy. Yeah, so this evening, the the board is being asked to amend Lane Code Chapter 10 to adopt the amendments to the Springfield Development Code, specifically the floodplain development code for the city of Springfield. And this specific code provision will apply within the Springfield urban growth boundary and outside of the city limits. And Lane County and the city of Springfield entered into an intergovernmental agreement that Springfield would regulate construction and development outside of the city limits and within their urban growth boundary in 1986. And at that time, Lane County adopted the Springfield Development Code for implementation within the Springfield urban growth boundary. And now, in order to amend that development code, we also have to amend Chapter 10. And I'm going to leave it to Sandy to discuss the details of those code amendments.
And before I get into the details of the code amendments, just a little bit of background on the flood insurance program. So I know that the Lane County Board is probably pretty familiar with this, because I know you've had several amendments coming your way that Rachel has taken through your public hearings process. But basically, the National Flood Insurance Program was created by the US Congress in 1968, it is administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And objectives are to, one, ensure new buildings will be free from flood damage, to prevent development from increasing flood damage on existing property. And that is basically by, when you're putting more mass in the floodplain, you could be causing a rise in the flood elevation or a change in the flood current kind of as it comes through. So that's that second objective is addressing the impacts of adding fill into the floodplain that could affect other properties nearby. And then the third objective to ensure natural and beneficial functions of the floodplain are preserved. So by participating in this National Flood Insurance Program, residents and homeowners in Springfield and our jurisdiction out to the urban growth boundary have access to the federally backed flood insurance. And it also enables Springfield to be eligible for federal disaster relief. So those are two pretty important components of why we want to make sure that we are compliant with the requirements from FEMA to continue participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. A little bit of our history of regulation. Springfield joined the National Flood Insurance Program in 1985, adopted amendments in 1986 to include floodplain regulations. And then in 87 revised them again to ensure compliance with the minimum standards that came out of FEMA. There were seven more amendments with substantial amendments made in 1997 to meet the minimum standards for participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. In 2007, Springfield reformatted the development code, and so the regulations became section 3.3-400, so they were codified into that section of the Springfield Development Code, and here we are today, once again, needing to update our floodplain regulations to comply with the minimum requirements to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. This map generally shows the area of floodplain, as you know, Springfield is between two rivers, so we have the McKenzie River on the north side, and its association, associated floodplain, and then the coast fork of the Willamette River coming through here, joined by the, I'm sorry, the middle fork of the Willamette River coming together, joining the coast fork to continue through the Glenwood area with its floodplain, and then we have some other smaller floodplains, the Mill Rays, Channel 6, along the Q Street 126 corridor. So what these changes are not, we are not changing the FEMA floodplain maps, and we are not changing the floodplain overlay district boundaries. In Springfield, the 100-year floodplain is the area of special flood hazard. So that is the area to which the floodplain overlay district boundary applies. So these amendments will apply to, I mean, the floodplain regulations would apply to new construction and development, substantial improvements, and then conversions from residential to non-residential land use and vice versa. These proposed amendments are based on the Oregon Model Flood Hazard Management Ordinance, which became effective in October of 2020. So there are when you look at the redline legislative formatting of the code, you'll see that there are quite a bit of changes. There is a lot of rearrangement, rewording, we've added sections, as I mentioned before, we moved definitions into this section, and so there are numbering and formatting changes. So I'm gonna touch on a few of the key proposed changes. So one is the floodplain administrator duties. There are changes in terms of what the floodplain administrator needs to do in reviewing permits, the information that we are to obtain and maintain, and then who we are to notify about changes such as jurisdictional boundary changes. There is a change in terms of substantial damage, so one thing we wanted to highlight is if there should be a natural hazard event, we would be required to go out and conduct the substantial damage assessments. And so that's just something to be aware of, since we do know that we could be facing some natural hazards, whether they be flood or the Cascadia event or something like that. So previous floodplain regulations applied to new construction and substantial improvements, but now we've added this conversion piece. So if a structure was residential and is converting to residential, to commercial, then they would need to come into compliance. Including elevating that base flood elevation up above that one foot if they weren't previously. On manufactured dwellings, we have changed, the requirements changed, the anchoring standards. It changes how you measure the height for how high they need to be above the base flood elevation. And I will add another point here, which is brought out by the one piece of public testimony that we've received for this hearing. And that is that in existing subdivisions and mobile home parks, so when I say mobile home parks, manufactured dwelling parks, or subdivisions that include manufactured dwellings, any replacement dwellings will now need to comply with the elevation requirements and all of the floodplain requirements. Whereas previously, that was not the case. The new regulations include some prohibitions on environmentally hazardous materials, so this includes toxic material, oil, gasoline, or any priority persistent pollutants identified by the Department of Environmental Quality. And the model code did not allow those in a pertinent structures, which we would typically call it accessory structures, unless they were contained within a tank that met certain requirements. Our planning commission made a recommendation to also prohibit the storing of these materials within a crawl space unless it's in a tank. If that crawl space is below the base flood elevation or in a garage, unless within that garage, it's elevated above, one foot above the base flood elevation or in the tank. The planning commission also recommended inclusion of the requirement that the tanks meet requirements of the fire code, that's true anyway, but we've added the language into the proposed code to make sure that people are aware of that necessity to comply with the fire code. One other area that the planning commission recommended a higher standard is in regard to recreational vehicles, those that would be in an RV park or an RV storage. And so the regulations are written such that the owner of the RV park or the RV storage would enter into an agreement with the city stating that they would operate their facility in compliance with the floodplain regulations. And that prior to the flood season, the manager would check that the RVs are either fully licensed and ready for highway use, or that they would meet the requirements of a manufactured dwelling with anchoring and elevation. Furthermore, that the RV park or storage facility would have an emergency plan that specifies how the flood warnings would be received, and then how the vehicles, trailers, and occupants will be safely evacuated in the event of a flood. The approval criteria for this set of amendments comes from Lane Code and the Springfield Development Code. In the Springfield Development Code, it's referencing the Metro Plan, applicable state statutes, and then the applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. And then the next steps, if all goes as planned this evening, and you decide to close the hearing and the record, then the city council would hold its second reading on the ordinance and adopt it on January 3rd. And then the Board of Commissioners would hold your third reading and adopt ordinance number 2108 on February 8th. And then it would be sent to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for acknowledgement, and then the amended regulations would go into effect. Rachel, do you want to add anything at this point?
I do just want to make one clarification, that the memo that was provided to the board identified a date of January 25th as when you would see this item next, and I just wanted to point out that that has been updated to February 8th. If the deliberations get moved, they would be moved to that date. That's it for me, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Leonard?
Thanks, thanks for the report, Sandy, very informative. So when you're saying that the RVs have to be either anchored and elevated, I take it that means on blocks. The other alternative is properly licensed and ready for highway use, does, does ready, does, does ready for highway use just mean properly licensed, or would there be something else that would be required?
So when we talk about ready for highway use, that means there's nothing built onto the RV that would prevent them from being able to drive or be towed away so that there's not like a shed that's been built to attach to it.
Right.
That basically that these are ready to go. And that they're operational, you know, that they're not are broken down, RV without tires, something like that.
Okay, so if they're being put up on blocks, would it be okay to build onto them at that point?
So if they're built, put on blocks, then it's really more than put on blocks, because they would need to be like a permanent dwelling, like a manufactured dwelling would be, where they are actually anchored, and you have a foundation.
Okay, and that would mean like metal skirting around it, that kind of thing?
It may, I mean, the, we wouldn't require the metal skirting, that's more of a aesthetic component. But they would need to make sure that they're not gonna float away, is really the the main thing, and that the water can flow through the, if there is a foundation type structure wall, that the water is gonna be able to flow through that, like you would have the openings.
I see, so it would have to be, well, part of the requirement would be a certain height off the ground, then.
Correct.
That's what I needed, thank you.
Ms. Senator Bozovic?
Thank you. So as we did our floodplain updates, we found out that there's what the minimum to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Then there's the model language, the model language, optional language, and then there's stuff that's beyond that. Can you quickly tell me where this draft code goes beyond the minimum standards to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program? And where it reaches beyond just the base model code and incorporates optional code, because I, we got a letter from the Springfield Realtors concerned about a two-foot freeboard, which is above the, what's needed, in fact, one foot's above what's needed to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And also, as you were talking about hazardous materials, my understanding that's part of the optional portion of the model code, not the mandatory model code, so if you could, if, you know, either Ms. Belson or Ms. Serslov could kind of really quickly just give me a broad brush, what's, what's, what's above and beyond National Flood Insurance Program, what's outside the model code, what's optional model code?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. And I have not yet addressed the, fully, the Board of Realtors letter, we'll get to that in a bit, but to more directly answer your question, there are three places where our existing code went above and beyond the requirements. And that is in the applicability section 3.3.420B2, where if we have an area that is susceptible to inundation from water that has not been identified as a special flood area on FEMA maps, then we can add that to our regulated floodplain area. We don't have any like that, but the code allows for that. The second area where our existing code goes above and beyond, and we've maintained these going forward, is that for non-residential construction, we require that they be floodproofed to one foot above the base flood level. Whereas the minimum requirement is it just has to be floodproofed up to the base flood elevation. And then the third place is in the floodways. We do, would not allow the subdividing or partitioning of land for residential purposes if the property isn't located entirely within the floodway. So those are the three existing places where our code goes above and beyond that we have maintained. And then the only ones that we've added beyond that in this update process were those that I identified that the planning commission had recommended for the RV parks, and then the toxic materials. It was already required for the appurtenance structures in the model code, but they added it to the crawl space and the garage.
Sandy, was it added? You know, as part of the model code, one of the optional pieces of model code, or was that in the base model code? Because I know there was options, and I believe the hazardous materials, some of that, or at least some identifying structures around hazardous materials was part of optional code. I'm a little concerned, because the definition of hazardous materials is super tricky. And you can actually have a lot of businesses and even residential chemicals qualify as hazardous materials, so I'm concerned about that.
So we just let me see if I can share this here. So we took the definition out of the model code for toxic material, oil, gasoline, we didn't actually use the hazardous materials definition, we just used the language toxic material, oil, gasoline, or any priority persistent pollutant identified by DQ. So I think we avoided the issue, some of the issues that you had with Lane County in terms of defining hazardous materials, we have not done that. So we took the language from the model code that applied to appurtenance structures and applied it to the crawl spaces and garage language.
Thank you.
Rachel, is there anything else you wanted to add there?
No, I think that covers it, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, yes, Vice Chair Farr and commissioners, I'll be calling on commissioners, if you could raise the hand icon, we're not used to that, but please, Vice Chair.
Thanks, you know, thank you, Chair Bernie, and thank you, Ms. Belson, for the presentation, Rachel Serslov, thank you. Just a quick question, this is kind of out of curiosity, you mentioned as recommended by your planning commission, do you usually accept recommendations of your planning commission as you move forward?
So are you asking if we accept their recommendations?
It's just kind of out of curiosity, do you take the study that they do and use it to make decisions?
Yes, so what the draft that is before you incorporates the planning commission recommendations, and then we also added some other staff tweaks based on review from Department of Land Conservation and Development and such, so the the version that's attached to your ordinance incorporates both the planning commission recommendation and a couple additional staff changes. And those were outlined in the memo that we've provided.
That covers my question perfectly, thank you very much.
Councillor Woodrow?
I just wanted to clarify the response that Jay got. Your response in regards to the Board of Realtors concerns, was I clear in hearing you say that part of the above and beyond the minimum is already in place?
So maybe I should address those concerns now, I was gonna do it during the public hearing, but the, there are two concerns raised by the Board of Realtors. The first issue is the freeboard, the two feet of freeboard. So in areas where we have an identified base flood elevation, we have an existing requirement to build one foot above for the lowest floor elevation, and that is not changing. We are the, going forward, it will still be one foot above, your lowest floor will still be one foot above the base flood elevation for residential structures. What I think they looked at was in areas where we do not have a base flood elevation. And the existing code says that the city should require that the residents be reasonably safe from flooding. And then it states that if the home is not elevated at least two feet above the highest adjacent grade, that flood insurance rates may be higher. What is changing is to comply with the requirements of the model code is that you will continue to be required to raise it high enough to be reasonably safe from flooding, and that's requiring us to look at historical data, like if there are aerial photos or whatever from past floods. But that it must be at least two feet above the highest adjacent grade. It's no longer advisory, it's, it's a must, and that's when we do not know the base flood elevation. So I think that's what they are talking about in that first point. In Springfield, most of our floodplain does have a base flood elevation. But there are some where we don't know, those are the unnumbered A zones. And then the second point from the Board of Realtors involved replacing the mobile homes in the existing mobile home parks and subdivisions, and that is a requirement of the model code, so both issues raised by the Realtors, we are doing, making the changes to meet the minimum requirements.
Councillor Pictionary?
Thank you, apologize for running late, I had another commitment. So I guess the simplest question I have is, you refer to the model code. And is the, is the model code, is that something that we crafted, or whoever crafted, so is it FEMA crafted that?
It was created by Oregon, the state of Oregon, to apply within Oregon based on federal requirements.
Okay, and so, so all the elevations you're talking about, this model code So all the elevations you're talking about, that this model code is something that we do not have a choice, and it's something that. They're saying, yes, is what you must do.
So the elevations are. The flood base flood elevations are based on studies that are done that are FEMA approved.
Okay. So is it, but? I guess kind of a yes, no, is it is this model code detailing out things that we do not have a choice, but we must comply with.
Correct.
So then. The argument that the Realtors are making stating that there's certain things that that are being considered are not required. And you're saying they are required. Is that, am I understanding this incorrectly?
Well, I think that they they may have not completely understood the proposed amendments. So I there is a requirement for the two feet in to be elevated. Um, above the grade in areas where we do not have a base flood elevation. But we only are requiring one foot. What they call freeboard in areas where we do know the base flood elevation. And they didn't, they didn't make a distinction, so I'm just assuming what they were looking at.
Okay, so then, so then we are making the decision to go one foot is something that we're deciding to do is not, and is being. Not being mandated, but something that it sounds like we're being, we're deciding to do.
The one foot. Above base flood elevation for your lower floor is what we do now. And is what it is also what will continue to be required with the model code.
Okay, so we just we do that and it's required. We don't have a choice there. Okay, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not. I mean, I understand we need to, we have to do things right, gotta follow the. Requirements, but I don't want to see, I I can't support. Further restrictions or requirements when we're not told that we have to do that. I don't want things kind of dreamed up. It would just be great. I mean, not dreamed up, but you know, just created without having some sort of mandate to back us. So I'm I'm okay. Thank you, Sandy.
I saw Christina pop up. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add that those provisions from the model code are almost verbatim, the minimum criteria under federal law. They've copied, pasted them into the model code. So it's not an area where we likely could work through the exception process to change something in the model code. Um, even if that's what the council and board wanted to explore, because those elevations are listed in federal rules. And I'm happy to provide a site if that's of help to the border commission. Um, it's in forty-four CFR sixty point three.
Thank you. Last call for any questions before we adjourn the work session. All right, then I'm gonna go adjourn the work session of the Springfield City Council and then turn it over to the county commission.
Who will follow the mayor's lead and adjourn the work session for the Lane County Board of Commissioners?
Don't worry, we're all staying here for the next act. I'm gonna call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Spitz.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Bradley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
I'm here. Thank you.
Um, and I will call this regular session of the Springfield City Council, Lane County Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call.
Sorry, I was trying to get to my mute.
I know this isn't our usual.
Commissioner Triger.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bozovich.
Here.
Vice Chair Farr.
Here, thank you.
Chair Bernie.
Here.
All right, uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag.
Of the United States of America. Into the republic.
Public from which.
Which stands. One nation.
Nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Divisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, Springfield and Lane County elected officials are holding a joint public hearing to hear testimony on city-initiated amendments. To the Springfield floodplain overlay district. Lane County must co-adopt any amendments to the Springfield Development Code that apply to properties outside of the city limits. As the floodplains of McKenzie River and Middle Fork of the Willamette River and various small streams are located both inside the city and outside of the. City within Springfield's urban growth boundary, the city council and the board of commissioners must adopt code amendments. If you are here this evening and would like to speak about this action, you will have the opportunity to raise your hand after the staff report. And you will be called called on to unmute yourself and speak. I hereby open the public hearing on ordinance amending Springfield Development Code. Section three dot three four hundred floodplain overlay district regarding regulation of development SDC within the floodplain. And many SDC section six point one dash one hundred definitions, adopting a severability and abbreviation clauses and providing an effective date. And we will go through and have the city council declare any potential or actual conflicts of interest. And I will start and then we will go by words. I do not have any conflicts of interest to declare.
I have no conflicts to declare.
I have no conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest to declare.
No conflict of interest to declare.
I have no conflicts of interest to declare.
Nor do I.
Very good. Then I'm gonna turn it over to the county commissioner.
And I hereby open the public hearing for ordinance number twenty-one dash oh eight. In the matter of amending lane code, chapter ten, to co-adopt amendments to the floodplain overlay district. Of the Springfield Development Code for the urbanizing area between the city limits and urban growth boundary of the city of Springfield. And adopting a savings and severability clause, file number five oh nine dash P A two one dash oh five eight seven zero. And at this time, I will ask if any commissioners have any conflicts of interest or biases to declare. Diane, I think this is you.
I'm sorry. I are you asking about public comment?
No, we are, I'm asking you to, I didn't ask each commissioner whether they have a.
Okay, I I apologize. Sorry. Commissioner Triger.
No conflict of interest.
Commissioner Buck.
None.
Commissioner Bozovich.
None.
Vice Chair Farr.
No conflicts, but I am biased toward the millers over the colts.
Chair Bernie.
No conflict, and I share the vice chair's bias.
All right, the order of proceedings for this hearing will be first, the report by the staff, followed by public testimony. And then additional comments by the staff. Can we please have the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Board of County Commissioners. Uh, my name is Sandy Bellson. I'm the interim planning manager here to present on behalf of the city of Springfield. And we also have County Representative Rachel. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners and City Council. My name is Rachel Serslov, a staff planner with Lane County. Thank you, Sandy.
So I'm going to do an abbreviated version of what I presented for the work session. So for those who are attending just for the public hearing tonight's. Public hearing regards the floodplain overlay district. And is being considered by both the city council and the county board of commissioners in a joint public hearing. These are type four legislative amendments in that they affect the development code and apply broadly. There are changes to section three point three dash four hundred, the floodplain overlay district. And then also changes to section six point one dash one hundred definitions. Um, it requires these amendments require approval. Um, by both bodies and. The. County board's decision will actually amend Lane County. Code, chapter ten, and I'll ask Rachel to explain that further.
Thank you, Sandy. Yes, the board is being asked to amend Lane Code, chapter ten. To adopt amendments to Springfield's development code, specifically the floodplain development code for application within. The urban growth boundary and outside of the city limits of Springfield. And Lane County and the city of Springfield entered into an intergovernmental agreement that Springfield would regulate. The construction and development outside of the city limits and within the urban growth boundary in nineteen eighty-six. And at that time, Lane County adopted, uh, the Springfield Developments Code. For implementation within the Springfield urban growth boundary and with updates to that development code. Um, Lane County must also make amendments to Lane Code, chapter ten. Thank you, Sandy.
So quick background. The National Flood Insurance Program was created by Congress in nineteen sixty-eight and. Is administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The objectives are to ensure that buildings will be free from flood damage. To prevent development from increasing flood damage on existing property. And three, to ensure natural and beneficial functions of floodplain are preserved. By adopting the regulations as required by FEMA. We are given access to the federally backed flood insurance to participate. In that flood insurance program, so our residents and property owners can get that. Flood insurance. It also ensures that Springfield is eligible for federal disaster relief. This map generally shows the areas of floodplain with the dark gray being the urban growth boundary. Um, so you can see here the McKenzie River. Um, and its associated floodplain, and then on the south side of Springfield, we have the middle fork of the Willamette River. Joining up with the coast fork. Um, through Glenwood, and so there's a floodplain with those, and then there are some smaller streams such as the Mill Race. The Channel Six. This floodplain area along Highway one twenty-six and Q Street. So these regulations apply to any. Area that's within the hundred-year floodplain, which is a special flood hazard area. And that's the area we have designated as the floodplain overlay zone. There are no changes proposed to the FEMA floodplain maps at this time. So therefore, there are no changes to the floodplain overlay district boundaries. We have not added any. Areas outside of the one hundred-year floodplain to our floodplain overlay district at this time. The proposed amendments would apply to new construction and development. To substantial improvements and conversions from residential use to a non-residential use and vice versa. These proposed amendments are based on the Oregon Model Flood Hazard Management Ordinance, which went into effect on October twenty twenty. So these changes rearrange, reword, and add sections to our. Floodplain overlay district. Um, and it moved definitions that had been in the general definition section into. The floodplain overlay district section so that all of the definitions relied upon. In the floodplain regulations are referenced within that section in those definitions. Then there are also some numbering and formatting changes. So I'm just going to go over what the planning commission recommended be changed, and these are areas that do go above and beyond. The requirements of the model ordinance. So for storage of environmentally hazardous materials, which is not this, we did not define hazardous materials in the code. Um, but we are calling, that's just the way I I put this heading on here to. Refer to the toxic material, oil, gasoline, or any priority persistent pollutant identified by D E Q. So these are the materials that we are regulating. And as required by the model code, those are not allowed in appurtenant structures unless they're in a tank. Appurtenant structures are accessory structures, is how we usually call them. In other sections of our code. The planning commission. Recommended to. Also apply this prohibition. Of these materials in crawl spaces. If they were under the base flood elevation. Or in garages unless they are elevated one foot above the base flood elevation or in a tank. The planning commission also recommended that we include a reference to the fire code in the. Development code floodplain overlay district language, so that there is a recognition that, oh, yeah. Flood code, fire code also applies. The other area that the planning commission recommended. A higher standard is in regards to the RV park and RV storage. Facilities. That the owner of these facilities be required to enter into an agreement with the city. Such that the RV park or RV storage area would be operated in compliance with floodplain regulations. That prior to the flood season, the manager will check that the RVs are either fully licensed and ready for highway use. Or that they meet the anchoring and elevation requirements of a manufactured dwelling. And which would mean that they've gotten a floodplain permit for that RV as a. To show that they've met those anchoring and elevation requirements. And that the RV and park or storage has an emergency plan that specifies how flood warnings will be received. And how vehicles, trailers, and occupants will be safely evacuated in the event of a flood. The approval criteria for these amendments come from lane code. Chapter twelve point, well, twelve point three hundred point oh three. Oh, I'm not really sure how you reference those. And ten point three one five dash twenty, and then Springfield Development Code five point six dash one fifteen. A. Um, in reaching a decision on the adoption or amendment of refinement plans in this code's text, the city council shall adopt findings that demonstrate conformance to the following. The Metro Plan, applicable state statutes, and applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. The findings showing compliance with these approval criteria are found in the staff report. That would be attached to the adopting ordinance. And with that, I just want to stop sharing my screen and talk a little bit about how we got to this point. Uh, so the Lane County. Board and the city council are getting a recommendation from the Springfield Planning Commission, who held a public hearing back in. September, prior to that hearing, we provided notice to all the property owners within the floodplain overlay district. So that they knew about both. Hearings. Um, and then provided the general public notice. In preparation for this public hearing, we sent notice to all of the interested parties and provided the legal notice in the register garden on our website. We sent a media notice out that was carried by the Chamber of Commerce, Springfield Chamber of Commerce and the Chronicle. Thus far, we have received one public comment. That comment came from the Springfield Board of Realtors today in letter form. And their letter raises two issues of concern. The first issue is. And I'll read from their letter. It is our understanding that the two feet of freeboard clearance mentioned in the draft is more than required for participation. In the FEMA NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. So. I want to address that in two ways. One is that in areas where we have a base flood elevation. Our existing requirement is that the lowest floor of a residence be elevated one foot. Above base flood elevation, and we are not changing that, and that is compliant with the model ordinance. Where I think, and I don't know, I didn't have time to clarify with the. Board of Realtors, since this just came in today, but what I think they may have been looking at is the. Section of the code that applies to areas where we do not have a base flood elevation established, and those would be the unnumbered A zones. In that section, there is a change from what our current code says to what would be required with these adoption. And that is. That if we do not have a base flood elevation, that. that if we do not have a base flood elevation, that in addition to being reasonably safe from flooding, there must be at least a minimum two feet elevation to that lowest floor above the adjacent grade. So previously, our code recommended that and said that if you don't elevate at least two feet from the adjacent grade, your flood insurance may be higher. But with the model code language, you are now required to be at least two feet above the highest adjacent grade, and that is a requirement from the model code. The second issue they raised concerns with is in terms of replacing existing mobile homes in mobile home parks and subdivisions. And that again is a requirement of the model code. So now, and and this is a change, so now if you replace a home, it must be elevated as required that one. Actually, we've changed how you measure the floodplain. I'm sorry, we we change how we measure the distance. Instead of being the lowest floor, it's to the chassis from the that base flood elevation, that one foot above. So, under our current code, if you're in an existing park or subdivision and there hasn't been substantial damage, you could replace without having to meet the elevation requirement. So this change is now requiring that higher elevation in compliance with the federal regulations. That by elevating that replacement home, that is helping to ensure that the new building is free from flood damage. If we are in the situation where we actually do have a hundred year flood. Rachel, I want to give you a chance to say anything before we turn it over to the mayor and chair for public comment.
I have nothing additional to add. Thank you, Sandy.
All right. Now is the time for public testimony. You may use the raise hand feature and we'll call you, call on you to unmute yourself and speak up. And we'll need you to please state your name and mailing address or you're part of the city for the record. And if you're interested, please raise your hand.
Mayor, it does not appear we have any hands for this item.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next part, which is deliberations by the council and board. So possible follow-up questions or discussion before we close the hearing and record. Does anybody have any comments or discussion that they want to make? All right, I am not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for the city of Springfield. Joe, you're on mute.
There's one in every crowd.
Every meeting.
And I will close the public hearing for the Lane County Board of Commissioners.
And I will go ahead and close the record for the city of Springfield.
And I will close the public record for the Lane County Board of Commissioners.
So this was the, this ordinance will be back for adoption on January third, twenty twenty-two for the city of Springfield.
And Ms. Sirslove and I will direct you and Lane County staff to bring back ordinance for adoption as written. Production on February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Sandy.
Yeah, I just would say that we would tend to incorporate this public comment and some response to that into the findings for the staff report, so that that would be incorporated into your ordinance for adoption on, in in January. So I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be okay, and if there are any other issues that you have, that we would address those in any changes to the findings or the amendments.
Uh, that would be perfect. We got people bouncing around here. City of Springfield.
Looks like something has triggered Commissioner Bozovich. Mayor, do you want to take questions at this time or comments?
I I think we can go ahead and discuss if people got any issues.
Commissioner, go ahead.
We adopt this code as an ordinance, so we should be moving to close the the record and approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty-one oh eight and setting the third reading and for February eighth. In fact, I will do that at this time, if that's okay with you, and and that that will cover us legally, because we, as by ordinance, we have to approve readings and
Let me, Commissioner, if I may, Rachel, we reviewed scripts. Does that meet with your approval?
Yes, that that is what should happen. That's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Bozovich, if you would.
So I'll move to close the public hearing and record for ordinance number twenty-one oh eight and approve the second reading, set the third reading for February eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I will second that.
Okay, Commissioners, it's been moved by Commissioner Bozovich. Commissioner Bozovich, would you repeat the motion and seconded by Vice Chair Farr, and then we'll vote.
Basically moved to close the record and approve the second reading and set the third reading for ordinance number twenty-one oh eight.
For February. Thank you, sir. Is there discussion amongst Commissioners? Seeing that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posed. Well, City Council, now you see how we would know. That motion's been approved unanimously five to zero. Mayor, I think we can continue. Mayor, now you're muted.
Well, I didn't want you to be alone. I'm going to go, that looks like the last part of our business, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting.
And I will adjourn the meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.